This conference will now be recorded.
If I start again. Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, I hereby announce that adequate notice of this meeting, as required by said act, has been provided by adopting a schedule of regular meetings for the year 2020, which schedule was posted on the Borough Hall Bulletin Board as well as the Borough website and forwarded to both the South Jersey Times and the Sentinel of Gloucester County and filed with the Borough Clerk on January 4th, 2020.
Please rise to salute the flag.
Aye, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which we stand. One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Karen, if you would, roll call please.
Mayor Wallace?
Here.
Mr. Costabone?
Present.
Mr. Chiola?
Here.
Mr. Halter?
Here.
Ms. Miller?
Here.
Mrs. Spence?
Here.
Mr. Melandro?
Here.
Mr. Scafidi?
Present.
And let the record reflect that Mr. DeLisandro is excused for this evening.
Thank you. Um, I would like to, we're going to go right into close. Can I have a motion to go into close?
Don't move.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Costabone, a second by Ms. Spence. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Against? All right, now I need everybody to sign off and go into the closed session. Okay, there were two links that were sent today. It's the second link.
It's red.
Good luck.
The red link.
The red link.
Wow.
Anna Vaughn.
Hi, Anna.
Hello.
I just hear you, I don't see you.
I'm calling in from my phone.
Anna?
Yeah.
I don't think we're in the right spot.
I know.
Karen, hi. Anna, this is JD. This is not the closed session. This is the open session. I just have the logo up there that says closed session.
Oh, because I clicked on the closed, red closed session.
Well, you know what? If you want, I can disconnect you and then you can click the link again. It should go in.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay.
I'm going to unmute. Closed session video. It says closed session. I'm on the main meeting? All right, then I'm going to get out of that. Okay, all right, so good.
Hello, is anybody in here?
Uh, no, the council's currently enclosed.
Is anybody in here? Hello, is anybody in here?
Uh, no, the council's currently in closed session. I don't know when they're coming back, but when they do, um, you'll hear them.
Thank you.
Uh, what's your name? I can put it in the list.
Michael Britt, B R I T T.
Thank you.
Hi Karen, you made it.
I made it. Before Anna, Anna's like hello, and I said, Anna, I think we're the only ones in here. Then you hear a voice of JD. I don't think you guys are in the right room.
Look at this. I am so proud of this team here. My man clock's already on. I don't even have to text them. Look at this. Tony, Big Cost, both came on. Look at you guys.
Oh my gosh.
G Cost is in the house.
I'm getting tired of being humiliated like this, you know?
Yeah, you and me both, you and me both, but they're right.
I didn't say they were wrong.
I know.
Here comes Miss Miller. I think all we're missing is Andrew.
I'm here.
I see Andrew.
I see Andrew.
John, do you have camera, John? Can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear everybody fine, just my camera's not working and it's probably better for all of you anyway.
Yes, I can hear and see you.
Okay, we can't see you.
Oh. Well, it's still look the same from the closed session.
Okay.
Oh, turn on the camera.
There you go. Okay, we have no proclamations or presentations. You need approval of the minutes. Karen, does anybody need to abstain?
No, they do not.
I have an approval of the minutes from the work session of October 1st as well as the closed executive work session of October 1st.
So moved.
I have a second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Against? Uh, any new business?
Yes, we have a request to go out to bid for the Fern Road Water Tower repainting. I need a motion.
Need a motion for that.
I'll make a motion to go out the bid for the water tower repainting.
Is that off of 55?
Yes. It's off of 55, right, Karen?
I believe so, yeah.
I believe so, yes.
Yeah.
I'll take care of it. Quick question on the motion. Does that get repainted with the same slogan and so forth that's on there currently or no?
That I don't know. I'd have to find out. I'd find out. We did discuss.
Want to talk about putting, uh, business on there?
We did discuss businesses on there and trying to, because this is a very expensive endeavor. So we talked about it, but I don't think it was very well, it was my idea, but I don't think it was very well received without putting businesses on there.
Well, no, it was, it was not well received by me, but I don't know how anybody else felt.
I think there's other towns that do it. I think we clearly ruled out, because I didn't like the idea either until I looked at other cities and other parts of the country that actually do that as well. And it's not a bad thing, you know, if we can get the money back for it.
Well, by, we could take a vote on it.
But if we go out to bid, that doesn't affect that part of it, does it? We can still do a motion to go out to bid for the painting, right?
Right.
Make that motion if everybody's okay with that.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Oh, it's a second on the motion, but aren't they going to know when, while they're painting, they're going to know, they're have to know what logo to put on it?
Yeah.
So when you go tell them that.
Yeah, George, usually Mark will come to one of our meetings and separately address the painting and the Logans is my recollection, how that process works.
Right.
So I think you can go out the bid at this point and then address that, you know, here after tomorrow. Yep.
Aye.
So I have a second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Against? Eyes have it. What else we have, Karen? Communication letter?
Yes, we have a retirement letter from Mary Beth Thomas of Park and Recreation Senior Center. She has been with us for 23 years.
Oh, do we need a motion to accept that?
Yes, sir.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Against? Eyes have it. All right, discussion. Tim, you want to take this first one?
Yeah, it's, at the moment, it's more informational from Mayor Council. Karen, Ed and I, or I don't know if Ed was on the call, Rose and I, I'm sorry, Rose and I, Karen were on the call with Craig Black from the County Assessor's Office. The property of 54 North Delsey Drive is the, uh, the big gray structure at the corner of Hive Street, Delsey Drive, across from the old Avits Hardware. And, uh, the, the property was recently bought by Adam Zipman, because Adam bought the property. He has recently converted the duplex into a single-family house with seven bedrooms. And he then submitted a tax abatement application directly to the County Assessor's Office, which precipitated Craig Black reaching out to us with questions. And the questions that aren't answered as of his phone call, but require additional work are Adam's request for abatement as a residential project. The County Assessor's Office has the property classified as a commercial property. If it's a commercial property, a tax abatement would have to come to the governing body for any approval. Uh, there's still additional property or building on this property, and we're not sure what Adam's intentions are. So the way we left it with Craig Black was that he was going to reach out to Adam to try to determine what other improvements or uses that Adam proposes on the property and for us to revisit, uh, these questions after Craig Black has had a chance to speak to him. Karen P, did I get all that right?
Yes, and the abatement, uh, Mayor Council would have to approve the abatement if the value is over 50,000. Anything under 50,000? The assessor does automatically. So that's what he's waiting to see if he's done with all of his improvements from the residential and the commercial, um, units on the property. And once he gets all the final additional COs, if there are any, he'll get back with us.
So there's no need for, I mean, certainly you could ask questions. There's no action being requested tonight, uh, just, uh, informational, because it could come back to the governing body in a formal request, but, uh, we're not at that point.
You know, wait, the, the value part threw me off. He, he wants the abatement because he thinks it's, it's commercial, correct?
Uh, no, he, Adam supposedly spent $156,000 is what he put on, I think it's around that amount on his tax abatement application. And he's asking for an abatement of that amount, uh, under our tax abatement chapter in our code book. So that, yeah.
He's asking for it is because he thinks it's a commercial project because the abatement only applies to commercial properties?
Uh, the reverse. Adam applied for it as a residential. The county assessor has the property classified as a commercial property.
Okay. It is a residential property, huh?
Uh, it, it is now as far as him using it, although the assessor, uh, has now begun to, uh, uh, look at the larger rental properties and is now putting them on the books as a commercial use and not a residential use. Uh, so that may have some, uh, some impact as well on why it's being looked at as commercial.
I believe there's another building on the lot, Tim, that makes it commercial.
Okay.
It's the multiple housing and then this other unit I think was deemed as commercial. I think that's what, but, and you're right. He's, he is switching these multiple bedroom properties to commercial.
Yeah. So the residential part, is that a permitted use, Tim?
Apparently it was a pre, to my knowledge on the conversation, it was a duplex and used as a duplex residential. But Adam took out the permits, Clark might be on the phone, know more about it than me, and converted into a single-family large house, seven bedrooms.
Ah.
Yeah, if I can jump in here, Tim, first of all, I, I think that you're, you mentioned the large gray building at the corner of High and Delsey. That's not what we're talking about.
Oh, that's important.
54 North Delsey, the property we're talking about is the Art Graphics, uh, commercial property where Art Graphics had the screen business. And then he also owned the house in the front on Delsey Drive where, where the owner of the business lived. Adam bought the property. He plans at some point to move his business to the commercial part. And first, he renovated the dwelling in the front, which had been a duplex. He made it a single-family and is renting it to college students. So he's looking for the abatement on the residential portion, which is done and been CO'd. But the problem is the entire property is one taxable property.
Which is commercial.
And it has a previous variance from the zoning board dating way back to the seventies that says they could have that business and the residential on the same property.
Okay.
Thanks for clarifying that location, Clark. I was completely wrong.
No problem.
So again, no, no action tonight, but it's likely to come back before the governing body for consideration, uh, once we're at that point. That's it.
All right, number two, uh, this is, I think, a no-brainer, but Karen, I'll turn it over to you.
Uh, so we have a refunding opportunity for our 2014 Kern Fund bonds. Uh, we can refund them, which means refinancing, um, principal payment stays the same, our interest would be lower. It doesn't extend out the bond. It stays on the same time schedule. Uh, we'll save about $45,000 a year doing this, a total of about 860,000 for the life of the bonds. So there's no cost to the borough. It's the, all the professional costs are rolled in the deal. Um, we're, we're, uh, if you approve this, we have, uh, an ordinance, um, for this bond refunding on the next meeting. Um, we'll see how it goes with everything going on with the market. It seems to be steady right now, but if something changed, we could always pull back. But right now, the interest rates are low. It's a good time to do, uh, do this and we'll save money, you know, moving forward doing this. That's it. If you approve, we can put the ordinance on the next meeting.
Okay. Any questions?
No.
Okay. Karen C, reorganization?
Okay, so, um, this is that time of year where reorganization, my, my office starts to organize for that. And I know it's probably, especially after hearing that, uh, the governor may tighten the reins a little bit. It's probably not going to be a party-type situation. Um, however, I would like to know if all of you would like me to send, like my office, to send out virtual invitations, like actual cards that we've been sending out every year now, um, for the past two years. This will be the third year since I've been the clerk. So, um, this year we were going to try and do, uh, um, a theme. Every year we try and do, um, pictures of Glassboro, things that have changed and that we've done throughout the town. and that we've done throughout the town. Unfortunately, we hit COVID this year and, um, a lot of things weren't able to be done. Uh, however, what we decided was that we were going to do, um, a historical retrospect of Glassboro. Uh, so I can be happy to show you those invitations at some point. I can email them to all of you for your approval individually. Um, but my question to you is, do you want me to send those out? And have, um, the virtual meeting put on the invitations? That's probably the best we can do for this year unless all of you had another option in mind.
Uh, I like the idea. Um, I mean, my thought process is, is to try to handle business as close to normal as we can. And if do, if having our reorg means doing it virtually, I would try to, I'm inclined to say, just continue to move forward, send the invitations out. I happen to like the, uh, the invitation concept, so I'm a little biased in that respect. But, uh, I think I I like the idea. That's just my two cents.
I like the concept as well. I don't like the idea of doing a virtual, um, reorg, but we have to do what we have to do. Um, so, yeah, Karen, I would say go ahead and send them out, so these people save the date and time.
Yeah, everybody disagree? Okay. Uh, Clark, you're up.
I'm up. All right, so we need, it's that time again, we need to do a reexamination report of our master plan. It's required by law every ten years. It kind of snuck up on us, we knew it was coming, but we were holding off because of the Penn Praxis study that was being done. Uh, we didn't want to spend the money on reexamining our master plan until we had that report. And of course, not to blame everything on COVID, but COVID hit, that got delayed. Now we're in a position where our reexamination report is due this year. And we don't have Penn Praxis's report, but there are a bunch of other things that are popping up that could affect our master plan, so. Uh, in in consulting the the planning board, uh, what we, what we'd like to do is, we would like to do a reexamination report similar to the one that was done ten years ago. It was only a nine-page report. It was very, uh, bland across things because it was only, it had only been a few years since we had done the last, uh, larger reexamination. Just something that tied us over to meet the statutory requirement until Penn Praxis is done. Uh, we get a little more information on the train and its timing. Uh, I understand the school's starting a strategic plan, reevaluation, all those things. It will give it, it will give us the time to look at all that and reevaluate our master plan. Obviously, there's going to be a lot of things we need to change after Penn Praxis. So I got a price from Remington and Vernick. For fifteen thousand dollars, they can provide us this abbreviated plan. Or the other side of that is, we can try and do it with the Planning Board Subcommittee to do the majority of the work. And, uh, just use the planner on and, you know, come in for a meeting with us, sit down with us for two hours, we'll pay them their hourly rate, that kind of thing. We would put a lot of work on the master plan Subcommittee, Council President Casabon.
Yeah, I I talked to, I'm sorry to interrupt you, I talked to Clark. And Clark, I hope I'm not putting words in your mouth, but I think that's the best thing to do for us to sit down and have somebody from Remington and Vernick can pay him hourly because fifteen thousand dollars is an awful lot of, uh, money. And I think with Clark leading the way, I think we can handle this. My opinion.
I I think we can get it done that way. Uh, it it is traditionally something the planner does. However, uh, we discussed it with the Planning Board Attorney and Tim kind of weighed in also that statutorily, it's not required to be done by the planner. So as long as we hit all the bullet points that are required by the statute, we should be okay.
Yeah, so Tim Scafidi would say, I agree with Clark. Tim Scafidi would say, because we are Glassboro, because we have Rome, because we have many people interested in developing as we continue to see, because we have people who want to sue us regularly on redevelopment projects, and why I respect that Clark and George and everybody could do it. We're on a tight timeframe. I would recommend you let the planner do it. Planners are licensed, planners have our experience. Uh, and just my recommendation, but I don't get to spend the money. I think Karen P said she could probably get it out of redevelopment, uh, but but that's just the lawyer because I'm fine spending your money.
Uh, Clark, is a, uh, is requesting an extension out of the question?
Well.
Or is it, or is it even, or is it worth it? I guess.
There is no, there is no, there is no extension, John, it's just a statutory requirement that we're supposed to meet. And without it, then we typically just have a, a master plan that is technically outdated if we don't have it going.
Uh, and the end of story, it's just gotta be in, no ifs, ands or buts.
Uh, if you want to have that protection that your plan is current and meets the statute.
Now, I did reach out to, uh, so some people in the, uh, planning field and other municipalities because, uh, they did a whole permit extension and all these extensions for COVID. However, all the developers get to extend their timelines, but they did nothing to, to help us and say, okay, if your master plan's up, we'll give you an extra year. They didn't extend any of that on the state level, so it is, it's either going to be up to date or it's not. And if it's not up to date, then it can be questioned.
So, and if we submit an abbreviated version, just from my understanding, if we submit an abbreviated version, so we meet the requirement of the statute, and then we start getting the Penn Praxis information and all this other stuff, and we want to update it.
At any time.
We, we can update that at any time. Um, does that come with a cost?
Uh, yeah, it it would, because when we start to incorporate all of Penn Praxis's, uh, ideas into our master plan, at that point, we're talking about changing not only the master plan, but then land use ordinances, and you would definitely want your planner in on that.
Yeah, um, yeah, Mayor, I think the last time, it was a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, if I remember Clark telling me the other day.
Okay. Yep, I just, I was trying to make sure I understand it correctly. Thank you, Clark. And Ed as well.
Yeah, thanks.
Why would we not follow the solicitor's advice on this?
You don't want to spend the money.
Right, and I don't disagree with Tim either, if, you know, the the planner is not a bad idea. I'm just, we're talking about a small timeframe and a a quick turnaround and a lot of money that I, the Planning Board does not have in their budget, so if you can find it elsewhere, great, but the Planning Board doesn't have it in their budget this year.
I, I think it is with the the other, by our reservation with, uh, not following our solicitor would be that with the abbreviated timeframe, we absolutely want to make sure that everything is done correctly.
Well, didn't they say Karen could look at another line item and and get the money? Is that right, Karen?
Yes, we have funds in our redevelopment capital budget that we can accommodate this.
All right.
Well, I could tell you, if I'm the solicitor and I'm and I'm suggesting to do something and you don't do it, I I I wouldn't be happy with that, not for personal reasons, but because I'd wonder why you're not following my advice, so.
I agree with you a hundred percent, Tony, but I just wanted everybody to know that Clark and I in the committee could have handled it, that's all.
Yeah, understood, understood.
As as great as you are, George, and Clark as well, um, I think we should follow the advice of our solicitor and and do it so we protect ourselves in the long run.
I agree with you, but I just wanted that out there, that we could have handled it.
George, I know you're a man with a plan.
Okay, Clark, thank you. Looks like we're going Remington and Verna. Karen, you want to do the resolutions?
Hey Eddie, could I, could I interject something before we go into the resolutions?
Yep.
Hello?
Um, yeah.
I, uh, I do some walking here in Camelot. And, uh, about two years ago, maybe two and a half years ago, there were complaints about Grande, which is the main drag of speeders. So we put in a a speed study, and it didn't warrant a speed study, so as I was walking today and I I did see some cars I thought were going kind of fast, then I noticed there is no speed limit signs here throughout this development. And, uh, if we, Timmy, jump in if I'm wrong, if we had radar here and there's no speed signs, nothing would hold up. So I guess what I'm asking is, uh, would, 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 would Council mind that if if I got ahold of Chip and we walk this area and put some speed humps and talking to Timmy, I believe it's like a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit, at least there's something. God forbid, if they come in here, we can afford. I'm just bringing that to Council. I don't hear nothing.
I would want to protect George on his walks, most certainly. So, yes, I'm okay. I'm okay with it.
George has bad knees, so he needs some protection on that.
Yeah, the the only thing is, uh, we might get hacked for, I guess we gotta, uh, watch where we, where we place these signs because some of us old people are a little fussy.
Yeah, George, that would be my only recommendation is maybe to talk to Scott when you finally have some ideas.
Yeah. I'll give, I'll give Chip a call, we'll walk it when he has time, and then I'll get ahold of Scott, maybe have Scott come out there with us and, uh, and walk it. Okay, all right, I appreciate that.
George, did you say speed humps too, or just signs?
Oh, the speed humps got denied, and, uh, in a way I'm glad because it would be fifty-fifty, some people want them, some people don't. But I think we have, we, the signage out here is pretty bad, especially with speed limit signs. And I think we should have some crossing signs too, but that's a thing of another day. But we do need speed, uh, speed, uh, limit signs, there's none out here.
Okay.
Okay, and, um, just one other FYI before we go into the resolutions. The Public Safety Committee did a number of police interviews, uh, and we are ready to promote one corporal. His name is Craig Rawls. Um, just want to make sure you're all aware of it because we'd like to swear him in tomorrow. No objections? Everyone take us through these resolutions?
Sure. Uh, who's, who's swearing Craig in?
That I don't know, just, I'm just relaying what Johnny told me, yeah.
Okay, I think that'll be a surprise in my office tomorrow.
Karen C, I guess you'll add a resolution to the next meeting just to memorialize the promotion.
Sure, sure, of course. No problem. We could add that. Um, so Resolution two forty-nine twenty, Resolution authorizing transfers within the accounts of the two thousand twenty current fund municipal budget of the Borough of Glassboro for the year of two thousand twenty at the request of the CFO. Resolution two fifty twenty, Resolution providing for the insertion of a special item of revenue in the budget pursuant to NJSA forty A colon four dash eighty-seven NPP COVID nineteen relief and recovery grant in the amount of one hundred thousand seven hundred dollars. Resolution two fifty-one twenty, Resolution authorizing refund of duplicate tax payment, Block one ninety-seven point oh four, Lot one twenty-five, in the amount of three thousand four hundred forty-five dollars and twenty-seven cents. Resolution two fifty-two twenty, Resolution authorizing agreement for professional services adopted by the Borough of Glassburs, Sicles and Associates Incorporated, up the, updated storm water management plan in the amount of seventeen thousand six hundred fifty dollars. Oops. Resolution two fifty-four twenty, Resolution authorizing execution of application for soil erosion and sediment control plan. Certification, Jacob Harris Lane roadway improvements at the request of the Borough Engineer. Resolution two fifty-five twenty, Resolution granting utility easement to South Jersey Gas Company in the Borough of Glassboro, two twenty-seven South Delsey Drive, authorizing Mayor's signature. And this is for the Pole Barn, I believe. Resolution two fifty-six twenty, Resolution appointing municipal court, oh, that is being tabled, two fifty-six twenty, I apologize for that. Um, Resolution two fifty-seven twenty, Resolution authorizing the Planning Board to conduct a reexamination of the master plan. Is this being tabled as well?
Uh, we could, uh, no, you could move forward with that. I know that we have another one, uh, for the professional services. Are we going to do that on Tuesday? Just add it on to the Tuesday agenda?
We can do whatever, whichever you'd like. If you'd rather add it on here, we can do that.
Yeah, I think Clark would like to get moving sooner or later because I think we are running out of time. So, yeah, why don't we do an add-on of that, uh, so we get that started, yes.
Okay, so it's both, correct?
It is correct, yes.
Okay, so the Planning Board to conduct a reexamination of the master plan of the Borough of Glassboro. And then we have Resolution, um, two fifty-eight twenty, which will be an add-on resolution for, to me, the phrasing would be, yes, professional services agreement between Remington and Vernick and the Borough of Glassboro to perform a reexamination of the master plan of the Borough of Glassboro?
It's correct, and for amount not to, not for amount not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars. In fact, the proposal is to be billed by the hour, but not to exceed fifteen thousand, yes.
Okay, those are your resolutions for this evening. And we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Wait, two fifty-three, did you not read that one?
Two.
I I I didn't see, I thought you skipped it when you were reading down.
Oh, I apologize. Two, I apologize for that. Two fifty-three twenty, Resolution authorizing execution of discharge of mortgage by the Borough of Glassboro, County of Gloucester, State of New Jersey, George G. and Virginia Franklin, six seventeen Heston Road. Thank you, Daniel. Um, Glassboro, New Jersey, they actually paid this amount off. So the discharge total was, um, fifteen thousand one hundred eighty-five dollars.
So I'll, I'll, I guess amend the first motion and make this motion to accept, uh.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion. I have a second, all in favor, state aye?
Aye.
Mr. Casabon?
Yes.
Mr. Fiola?
Yes.
Mr. Halter?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Spence?
Yes.
Okay, uh, I'd like to make a motion to open the meeting to the public.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion, a second, all in favor, state aye?
Aye.
Against? Meeting is now open to the public. If anyone in the public would like to address Mayor and Council, now is the time.
Hello, is anybody there?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, my name is Michael Britt. I'm from Turnersville. I'm not, I don't reside in Glassboro, but I want to. I want to, uh, for the agenda for one of the next meetings, I have a, an item I want to propose. Um, let me see here. I want to amend some of the language in Chapter four forty-five, Section G, and maybe Section I. So for one of these future meetings, can we get this on the agenda?
Uh, Mr. Britt, this is, uh, Tim Scafidi, the, uh, fire solicitor. It would probably be helpful if you could put in writing what it is you're requesting, address it to the governing body, identify those sections so we have a better understanding and we could address it, uh, officially.
Absolutely, thank you.
No, you're welcome.
Anyone else in the public?
Hearing none, I move the public portion be closed.
Second. I have a motion, a second, all in favor of closing the public portion, state aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, motion to pay all duly authorized bills.
There are no bills, I apologize, that's my mistake. There are no bills. I apologize. That's my mistake on the agenda.
No problem.
Okay, then I move.
Okay, if no one else has anything, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, all in favor, state aye?
Aye.
Well, have a wonderful evening.
You have a good night, everybody.
Good night.
Bye now.